School committee. First item on the agenda is public participation. Does anyone wish to speak before the committee? Yes. Please just state your name for the record, please.
Michelle Fitzgerald. I just have a quick comment about the proposed calendar for next year. I've seen it and I just think that going back that early, I mean, these kids are going back 12 days before Labor Day. They're not even gonna have two months of summer. Going back on a Thursday, to me, is very difficult for working parents because they either are gonna have to pay for a week of camp that they're not gonna be able to use the whole week. And then the kids are like, you know, you go to school two days this week, and four days this week, and four days this week. It's like a false start. And anybody who knows anything about education knows that that's not good for kids. They need structure, and they need to be in the classroom five days a week, and I just think that it would be detrimental to the kids as well. And, you know, I feel like that we have so little time with our kids that cutting their summer short by 12 days, and I get that we need to go back before Labor Day because it's so late this year, but for me, there needs to be some kind of a set policy. If Labor Day is on or before the 3rd, you start after. Or if it's on or after the 4th, then you start before, so that parents can plan. It's hard for working parents to be able to plan when they don't know. And I know that, you know, it's six months before the school year, but a lot of families, they plan their vacations. I've planned my summer vacation already because it's on the vineyard, and I have to make a car reservation, and I have to rent a house, and you have to do it in January when the spots open up, or you don't get one. So unfortunately, if the school year starts on the 27th, my child will not be here. And that's okay. I mean, this is not about me. It's about everybody, and I just think that 12 days is really early. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? Thank you for speaking.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jessie Clements, and I have a couple things to speak about. I'm a parent of two children in the district. I'm also the president of the Wareham Special Education Parent Advisory Council. I'll attempt to be brief. I want to remind everyone that we do have an event tomorrow night, starting at 5:45 in the middle school library. Ms. Mary Morgan and Dr. Marks are gonna be discussing the upcoming special education coordinated program review, and they're looking for parent participation volunteering. And then Heather Hogan, who's a parent in the district, is going to be presenting magic wands and team meetings, an informal session on the understanding of the special education The next thing I wanted to bring up was the disabled parking in the district.
Excuse me, Jessie. When was that thing tomorrow? What time?
5:45.
Thank you.
To 7:15-ish. Thanks. Okay, so disabled parking in the district. At the high school, there are a few disabled parking spots in the parking lot off of the circle, close to, I guess, maybe the first entrance to the building. So at the recent 4th grade band and chorus concert, the entrance to the building where those spots are was locked. And in general, with most events occurring at the gym and the auditorium, right now there are no disabled parking spots out front. I'm not even sure if that's legal parking right in front, like how people kinda park on that roadway, but I actually just drove there, so I knew what I was saying was accurate. There's nothing. So the entrance, again, this was a night event, I don't know, maybe it was just a one-time thing, but the disabled parking, the closest entrance was locked, and there is no disabled parking close to the gym and the auditorium where most of the events are held. The other thing is at Minnet, there are disabled parking spots up at the back of the cafeteria, and there was the care, there was a care drama performance, so this was at about, it was after school, and you park in disabled parking, and you go to enter the back of the cafeteria, and there's a sign that says, "Please enter through the main entrance." Well, that involves walking down steps or going down a hill to go into the main entrance, so we knocked on the door, and the staff member said, "You need to go around to the front," and we said, "Well, what do we do?" We were in a situation where that would've been difficult, not impossible, so she let us in. And just, as I was typing this, I quick, I did a search on the ADA website and just found something, and again, this is just me reading from a website, Title II Program Access. State and local government agencies that offer programs, services, or activities in existing facilities need to make sure that people with disabilities can gain access and participate in these activities. There are a variety of ways that agencies can ensure access to programs, but making structural improvements is often necessary. I know there is a ramp at Minnet in the front, but I'm not sure, that's kind of like the bus entrance, so I don't know if there are parking spots over there or not. And I'm more than willing to help figure this all out, to make sure we're up to standards. So that's my special ed thing. My next question I have is, with everything with the budget coming through, and I work in a district, and my position is funded as a Title I position, and I'm just curious as to where Title I funds go in this district. Title I comes from the amount of free and reduced lunch, people that are in the, I guess, the poverty level, whatever that percentage is, that's how much money the district gets. I work in Dartmouth, I would guess, I know the percentage is less in Dartmouth compared to Wareham. I don't know how much money comes in, but I know that full-time positions as math specialists, literacy coaches, math coaches are funded in my district, and I know that's a wish list thing on this budget for the elementary schools to have interventionists, so I'm just curious where Title I money goes.
Are you able to answer?
I am. Would you like me to?
I would love you to.
Okay.
Thanks.
Currently, we receive $598,452 in Title I funds, and what we do is, we have partial funding for 11 teachers, partial funding for paraprofessionals and clerical staff. We have implemented the FAST assessment for the testing for all our students with that. We also offset interventionists and instructional leaders with the money. Part of it is, of course, for tutoring services as we're mandated to do. We have some professional development. It helps us with coordinators of the program, and then a very, very, very small percentage of instructional material. So we have geared it toward staffing.
Okay, so the question about maybe, like, the tutoring, and if there are, whoever's part-time under that, are they held to the same standards as, say, the instructional leaders who are observed and evaluated? So do we know that the tutoring is working?
We're collecting data on that, because what we have done in the past, we looked at what, we knew who was tutoring, then we started looking at scores, and then we, to see, is it making a difference, and if not, then we made some adjustments.
Okay. And who's responsible for, who's like, I know there's not a director of Title I, but who's responsible for?
Dr. Schwab.
Okay. All right. And then one other thing about the school, oh, sorry.
I'm not sure whether you're getting at this. I just wanted to caution you that I saw a recent analysis of Title I funding proposals for this coming fiscal year.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, the current Congress is proposing dramatic cuts. Boston, they had it isolated by major metropolitan areas. Boston, for example, if it went through, would get a 20% cut in Title I funding, so I don't think any of us should be sanguine about the level of funding that we might get for next year.
Right. So I'll ask my boss if I have a job next year, apparently. The last, thank you. The last thing regarding the school calendar that was previously mentioned, my question is, I was, you know, comments online, things like that, what happened to the superintendent's advisory council?
We've not had it going on this year.
Okay. Is this something that could've been, I remember it was asked about school uniforms, and people put it out there on Facebook in questions, is this something that could have been brought up in that manner, or are there contractual obligations that go with the school calendar that you can't?
There are some contractual obligations, and what happens is, the director of curriculum works with our union president, and we work back and forth with the calendar. The union president's here, if he would like to make any comments, he certainly could about that. I'm not gonna put him on the spot, though.
Okay. He's looking down. All right. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fitzgerald is making his way.
You don't get to that often.
Good evening. My name is Brian Fitzgerald. I'm a 5th grade English teacher and the president of the Wareham Education Association, and I will specify mainly for her good reputation that I am not, to my knowledge, related to Michelle Fitzgerald, although we might have some cousins back in Ireland or something like that. Regarding the school calendar proposal, I would just say, from the point of view of the educators, this came up in, the idea of starting earlier than we have came up in December 16th, when I was meeting with Dr. Schwab, at the time when we were wondering if we were gonna see any snow this winter. And from literally that first meeting, one of us said, "What would people think if we were to start a week earlier, similar to what most of the Commonwealth does?" And on our part, we spoke to our members of the association. We received responses from, I'm going to estimate, just under 100 educators. Ninety percent of them wanted to go with this proposed schedule. And the reasons that we heard were that, the overwhelming reason, quite frankly, was that educators believed a day of instruction at the end of August has more value than a day of instruction at the end of June, not only because it's before your battery of tests, Advanced Placement SAT, PRC, and whatnot, MCAS, but also that students are more dynamic, more ready to learn, and we get more, we're able to build the foundation for the skills of these students in August and early September, rather than finish off the attic in June. So there was an overwhelming preference for that early schedule. I can't speak about any other effects. I will say, having spoken with many of my colleagues, were this to be adopted, the summer of 2015 would be awfully short. This is true, it'd be awfully short for the custodial staff, trying to take care of the buildings and turn them around over the summer. It'd be awfully short for the families, it'd be awfully short for everybody in the Wareham Public School community, making the summer of 2016, when we would be out before June 29th, much better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak during public participation? Seeing none. Moving on to good news. Anyone have good news?
I do.
Go ahead.
Okay. Congratulations to our winter sports teams, and basketball is being played, the boys at Durfee this evening, and I was really hoping for an update.
I have a score.
Oh, you do? Okay.
At the end of the first quarter, it's 11 to 9. Wareham.
Oh, good, good.
Got a long way to go.
The DECA home show is March 21st and 22nd at the high school. It's free admission. More than 30 local vendors will be there, come and support DECA and our local merchants. And finally, Mr. Hullett, a 4th grade teacher at Minnet, has started a new community service group called the MVP Club, and their goal is to promote positive values, pride in our community, and improve the lives of families in Wareham. They had their first fundraiser in January and February, and they brought in over $211, and these will be donated to Turning Point, so congratulations.
Is that it?
That's it.
Mr. Swett, did I see your hand up?
Yes. I wanted to let the committee know that the, at the finance committee, just before we came over to the school committee meeting this evening, your superintendent and I presented to the finance committee and received a unanimous, unanimous support for the tennis court article at town meeting. And I also wanted to compliment Mr. Minkel at the middle school, Mr. Gardner, who's coach of the girls' track team, and myself were over there recruiting for 8th graders to participate in varsity sports at the high school, and we were overwhelmed with interest, and it was a great time and lots of engagement. So my thanks to Mr. Minkel.
Anyone else with good news? I'll just add that I attended the science fair at the middle school.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and it was, it was great. I didn't know what to expect. I thought I was being, I didn't know what I was being roped into, but I went to it, and it was better than I expected. The kids really did a great job with it. Kid, one kid made a hovercraft, he really made it, too, this thing that he could stand on and just coast across the gym floor with a leaf blower, I think, attached to it. Exhibits on organic versus pesticides. The kids just really got into it. And Mr. Swett was there as well. We were judges, among many, but it was a great time.
Add a little vinegar, and you can make an egg bounce.
So, moving on to the minutes, February 11th, 2015.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll ask for an amendment. Hold on. It's right in front of you, right? Just on page three, where it says, in the second paragraph, "Mr. Lazarus stated that the superintendent and the budget subcommittee has worked diligently, and it is incumbent upon us to support the budget number and if modifications, and if a modification has to be made, so be it. He was in favor of voting the number as to meet our needs." And it's not represented in there that I agreed with him, too. So if you just say, like, Mr. Flaherty agreed. And I'll have another, too. If you go down below where it says the vote, where it's 2 to 2, it's a tie, but it's not clear that the motion failed. If you just put it in there somewhere that the motion failed due to lack of a, you know, majority.
Chairman. If you look at the word directly below my name, it shouldn't be encumbered, it should be incumbent.
Okay, okay. Did you get that, Michelle?
Encumbered.
It says encumbered.
It should be incumbent.
Incumbent upon, yeah. I agree.
I-N-C-U-M-B-E-N-T.
So that said, I mean, if no one else says anything else, do we just have a motion to approve as amended?
Yes.
Are those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 4-0-0. Yep, 4-0-0. Just missing one. Next item, discussion of bus garage transfer and possible vote.
We have been working with the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager, Mr. McMillan and myself, and we would like to request the school committee to vote to begin the merger process of the school bus maintenance garage with the municipal maintenance garage. Currently, we employ 2.5 mechanics, and they would be transferred and would work under the town. This would combine the efficiencies in both departments. The current bus garage would then be turned over to the harbor master, and certainly we appreciate all the collaboration and hard work with the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator, Mr. Sullivan.
Anyone care to discuss that? And Mr. Swett?
With your approval, I would, I would like our transportation manager to come down and be available for questions.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for coming, actually.
We haven't prepared anything for you.
No, no, no. I understand.
Oh, do you have a question?
Yes.
Oh.
You just wanted him to walk down here. Sit at the table. Have a stare at him.
Just didn't want to get you guys closer, so I have a closer view of everything. Thanks for being here, Jeff. I assume you've considered the merits of this in as unbiased a way as possible, even though I suppose in theory it could have an impact on you, but in the reality is, I think it's, it can be looked at reasonably objectively. Do you have some thoughts?
We all, as this department and the town, all need to work together to obviously deal with our budget restraints at this point. I've expressed my concerns to Mr. McMillan. I just want to make sure that the school buses remain a priority.
Can you share those concerns?
I am right now. I want to make sure that they remain a priority as far as the repair and maintenance go, considering what we transport, and I have been assured that that will continue. Our preventive maintenance process, our preventive maintenance program will continue to happen, because we do, as we all know, have an aging fleet, so we need to maintain the assets that we have. So I just want to make certain that we continue with, you know, the inspection process and our passing rates, and that we don't lose sight of what we transport in the school buses.
You have a software program for the maintenance, correct?
That is correct.
I assume that it's going to be maintained by this combined department?
I don't, I'm not aware of what municipal maintenance has, if they even have a program, I don't know.
But the program that you have, is that specifically for school buses?
It's called Easy Bus.
So I guess it is.
It is specific to buses.
Okay. Have you found it valuable? Because I know a few years back, you were part of the process to implement it, isn't that?
It allows us to track maintenance specific to a particular bus, or a particular series of buses, or a particular make, or a particular year. It allows us to track the cost on a monthly, yearly, even a daily basis in some aspects. So we can, it gives us a good handle of what we've spent, how many hours we've spent on a particular vehicle, when vehicles were serviced. It allows us to print out a report of what's coming up next, what we should schedule. So yes, it's been very beneficial to keeping on track.
But you can't think of any reason why it couldn't be maintained by the combined departments?
I don't see a reason not to unless they had something that was superior or equal to what we had.
Okay.
I mean, we do have, you know, we pay a fee, you know, to use this program, it's updated, so I don't see any reason why we couldn't just switch it over.
Thank you.
Mrs. Vugan.
The new facility that you're moving to, so the new garage that you're looking to, that you're moving to, have you had a chance to, I'm sure you have, look through it and inspect it? Is it, is it a step up compared to what we have, or where you're fixing the buses today?
If the plans that I understand of the modifications that need to be made happen, yes, it would be a step up facility-wise.
Okay. Can you give just one example of the?
They would need, there's a large storage area for tires and weed whackers, other assorted parts. My understanding is there'd be another garage door put on specifically for the bus section of the building. As it currently sits right now at this moment with, you know, their current storage situation, there's really not enough room in there for their vehicles as well as ours. So that's why I say with the cleaning and the adding of the doors, and the office door needs to be added on one of the sides, the repair facility would be, would be more adequate with those modifications. We'd have to obviously figure out parking, we'd have to clear out a lot of stuff. I believe the talk was on the left-hand side of the building, the opposite the pumps. We'd have to clear out a lot of the vehicles and stuff out there to obviously put the buses in there and make sure they stay on pavement, they'll preserve the frames from underneath. And then, and staff parking, we'd have to figure something out, but it's certainly something we can all work together, and I'm sure we can accomplish if this is the proposal that happens.
I have one more question of this for the superintendent, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you talk a little bit about the management structure that's gonna happen after this vote, and if this is approved? Management structure, when it comes to the management and the leadership, and ultimately who it reports up to?
Yes. The 2.5 mechanics would be reporting to the town, Mr. Menard, who's the current municipal maintenance director. Jeff would remain in charge of the bus drivers and all bus facilities. We would work in collaboration. We have a timeline to develop once it's approved. Last night, the Board of Selectmen approved. If tonight you approve, then we will start the joint meeting and moving forward.
On, along those lines, who would, who would be responsible for the safety inspections?
I think it would be a joint venture.
It would?
Well, we're going to work together with them, and we would oversee the school bus, and so that's a piece that we, you know, I, I would assume we would keep responsibility, but it's going to be a joint venture. And there are still many details that we need to work out.
In a minute. When was our last inspection, the safety inspection?
December, January. I don't have a specific percentage available, but we've been pretty much on track doing all right. Yeah. Nothing was put down long-term or anything like that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And the next one is April, May. We don't have the date scheduled yet.
I just remembered, the last time you were here was a while, it was a while ago, I think you, it was, I think you said it was the best inspection we had, it was a?
Yeah, that was, what, maybe three inspections? I don't remember exactly. It was about three inspections ago, and it was phenomenal, that one. But we run, you know, about the same as far as the stuff that we need to fix or whatnot, but there's been nothing major, you know, no frame stuff that's put, you know, stuff down permanently. Obviously, we've added a few new vehicles, so we're able to take some of those older ones off the road, which of course helps, anytime you can take older stuff on the road. So we've maintained pretty much our level.
Okay. Did you have something, Mrs. Swett? Go for it.
Yeah, I think, assuming the superintendent means the following, then I agree with her. It is a joint effort in the sense that the drivers have a responsibility to report problems on a daily basis as they occur, and they also have a responsibility to make sure that things are in the bus that are required to be in the bus, and are not in the bus if they're not allowed to be in the bus. And Mr. Taitron knows exactly what I'm talking about. But in terms of the actual success of the mechanical, electrical systems in the bus, that's not a joint effort, that is the responsibility of the town.
Correct. That's what I meant. You said it much clearer.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping you meant.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other questions regarding this, or discussion? You were looking for a vote?
I am.
And a vote, just to move forward?
Yes.
Okay. Could I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the combining of the school and town transportation.
Is that, is that what we're trying to accomplish?
No.
I think what we're trying to do is
That's too broad.
To vote to merge the school bus maintenance garage with the municipal maintenance garage.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Swett?
I intend to vote favorably on this, but I want it clearly understood why I'm gonna be voting favorably. I would love to think that this is gonna save a lot of money, but I don't think it will. If you're going to save a lot of money, it is almost always as a result of some, some significant improvement in productivity, I, or similarly, reduction in the number of people, because that's where truly costs are, in people. And I have not heard and seen anything that indicates there's going to be any dramatic reduction in people, the use of people, or in productivity as a result of this. I acknowledge there may very well be an increase in safety, and maybe over the long term, this will be, this will save a lot of money, but I do not think in fiscal year 2016, we're going to see a lot of money saved. I also think, and I'm grateful to the Board of Selectmen for taking on the responsibility for making sure that we have high-quality buses for our kids to be, kids to use in transporting back and forth to their homes, so. So that's another reason that I think this is, um, this is beneficial and should be supported. But I do have one concern, which I assume will be addressed in the planning process, which is there are labor relations issues involved in this, in this action. And to my, to the best of my knowledge, unless the superintendent can say otherwise, they have not been fully fleshed out, and they, and they remain a potential obstacle to, to things going forward. So I think people should understand that. Nevertheless, in terms of moving forward, I think it, uh, it should be supported.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Pass is four zero zero.
Could you just tell me who seconded that wasn't? I wasn't sure if it was Jeff or Mel.
Mel.
What?
Second, you seconded the motion.
I was still rewriting it when.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, school calendars, starting with the proposed school calendar 2015 to 2016. What would you like to say?
Uh, the school calendar, the proposed calendar 2015, 16. If you have any questions, I would be very happy to answer them. If not, I would be asking for a motion to approve.
Anyone have any questions or concerns? Uh, Mrs. Vugan?
So, when taking a look at the school calendar, the main concern that I have is that the first month of school, the first, so the first four weeks of school, and I know the first week, that's proposed as a Thursday and Friday, but if you take it the next, the next three weeks, there's no one full week, week of school. So there is either holiday, or a half-day, or a complete day off. And when thinking about coming off the summer and going into school, being able to have four, or, you know, three, especially that first week, having a first week of school, I think is important. And so my question is, with the no-school day, the no-school, the Friday, September 4th, is that a scheduled-in-service day?
No, that's the Friday before Labor Day. Labor Day's on Monday.
Right. No, I understand that. So it's just a day off for all teachers, all-
Correct.
Okay. Is that currently in the contract that, that day is taken off? So in the teacher's contract, is that day listed as a must-have day off?
Um-
It's always been off, been on previous calendars.
Okay. So if there is- Yes.
Answer your question. No, it's not listed. I will tell you that you can look at that day under custom and usage. For as long as I've been teaching, that day has been a day off. The day, that Friday, whether we've started before Labor Day or after, we've had that Friday off. The staff has had that Friday off.
Okay. So because, from what I'm hearing, unless you go back and find out that it's contractually obligated, again, because this is a different kind of year, where first, we're starting before Labor Day, and second, with snow days and all of that, the, I think that it's, I have a hard time agreeing with this because of the whole idea that the first four weeks that our kids are going back to school, there's not one full week there. And so the, being able to change the calendar, so then we're able to start on Monday, the 31st, not have that Friday off. That gives us a first of full week of school. And that, then it's not until the early release day on the 15th, but that first week of school would then be a full week.
Are, are, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, see if anybody has any comments on it.
I do, but does anyone else? Mr. Swett?
First of all, I wanted to thank Andrea Picarelli, who sent a very articulate email to this committee and the superintendent. I, um, I understand all the arguments. I was, I, I think sometimes it's easy to forget that every time there's a day off, with so, such a high percentage of our parents working, it actually presents a childcare problem. And that makes me sympathetic about this Friday that, that Mrs. Vugan referenced. I, I do think the overall, um, the overall need to, to start earlier is, is understandable. But the more complete weeks we have, it seems to me better for education and better for parents. So if we were to eliminate that Friday, we could start one day later, and it might be just that much better, better for parents. So I would like to know the superintendent's reaction to that idea, which I think Mrs. Vugan and I are on the same page about.
Currently, we have professional development scheduled for the 25th and 26th. It's coming in from a national, it's grant-funded. I'm not sure we could reschedule. That would be the first thing that we would have to look at. The other thing that's even more important is, this is a joint venture between the Educators Association and the school district. And so if we're going to make some adjustments, then we're going to be back talking to our educators to come to an agreement with the calendar.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
All right. I'm, I'm a little less concerned about the Friday before Labor Day. I mean, I, I was kind of okay with them taking that off. I was more concerned with the, starting so early, you know, on the 27th. And is, if, if we started, if we kept that Friday and started on the 31st, does that muck everything up too, as far as?
It does.
So I-
We've had numerous drafts. In fact, I could ask Dr. Schwam to come forward, because she worked hand-in-hand with Mr. Fitzgerald and the union to come up with this calendar. We've had many versions. We've looked at different options. And this was, this wasn't something reactive. And I know that some people think that this calendar was developed out of a reaction to the number of days that we've had off from snow days, and that's not true. We started this back in December. We were hoping we would not have any snow days. Magically, we've just not been correct. And, and so this is, this is a process that has been going on for a long period of time until we could come to an agreement. Part of the way that we've designed this is to get in-service at the very beginning. And then we also modified some of our days to match in-cape service day, so we can take advantage of PD that's offered. We've not been able to do that in the last year or so, because the calendar did not match.
Did you have something?
No. If everybody's done, let me know.
Do you have something to say?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind at all.
Thank you. Being the only person on this board who's worked with a calendar similar to this, and has been involved in the past in negotiation of the calendar, let me address a couple of things. First of all, the Friday before Labor Day. We have a number of our staff who do not live in Wareham. We have a number of our staff that live on the other side of the canal, for some inconceivable reason. Also, we know that even around here, that weekend is a very busy weekend. People make lots of plans for that weekend. And as long as I've been in this district, that day has always been reserved, whether we have gone back before Labor Day, or we've moved our in-service just before that. That, that weekend has always been almost written in stone that that Friday would be off. And I think it is a good day to be off. In terms of starting early, in 2013, I remember sitting at my desk, June 28th, and saying, "Why can't the school year end? Because I'm going to retire." Yes, the snow that we've had this year has been something of an anomaly. On the other hand, most of our buildings are not air-conditioned. Only half of the high school is air-conditioned. And I can assure you that there are, that the learning process in a, in a 90-degree room on June 27th is not happening. My feeling is it is much better to teach in August than it is to teach in June. The students are burned out, and the teachers are burned out. They are ready for vacation. Also understand that, yes, the students are going to have a very short vacation in the summer, but so is the staff. As a matter of fact, the staff has a shorter vacation by two days. I would absolutely, wholeheartedly recommend this calendar, because if we get buried again, as we did in 2013, we had plenty of snow in 2013. If this happens again, we're going to be in the same situation where our last day is now the 28th?
My-
29th of June. And just from my experience, it is much easier, to paraphrase Mr. Fitzgerald, it is much easier to teach in August than it is to teach in June. And the students are going to get much more, being fresh coming in in August, than they will be in June. The third thing that I would like to address is the issue of not having full weeks of school in the first three months of school. We've never had full weeks of school because of Columbus Day, National Holiday, Veterans Day, National Holiday, Thanksgiving, National Holiday, and prior to our going-to-half-day in-service, we used to have two in-service days, full days, during the first half of the school year. And you can see that the first half of the school year is only 77 out of 180 days. This happens every year. We can't change Columbus Day, we can't change Veterans Day, and we can't change Thanksgiving. Going to happen. And staff adapts to the calendar, and so will the students. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lazarus. And I, I, like I said, I agree with the, the Friday before Labor Day, and you just kind of cinched it for me when I didn't even consider, yeah, I mean, everybody and their brother that, that can is going on vacation that day, and just imagine trying to get to school. You know? I, that, that's, that's something. But, um, I, the, the superintendent brought up that you've been working on this since December-ish? I mean, I, I'd argue that we've been working on it long before that, because I, I brought this up, and we actually, you know, deliberated a bit, you know, because I, we were just getting out so late, you know, in, in, in June, you know, and, and all my, you know, all my friends and family, they were already out. So, and, but, but, but back then, I was just hoping to, you know, shave off, you know, two or three days. Not like, you know, a week and a half, right? I, I like the direction it's going, but I don't know if I'm, if, I don't know if I could support it as is. I think it starts way too early. I mean, can we just shave off a few days?
Can Dr. Schwam come and speak, please?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I just wanted to indicate the, a bit of the process, so that you can understand how we looked at the calendar and what was priority as far as looking at that. There were three different calendars proposed to the membership. All different configurations of different days. And with that said, so that with those three different scenarios, it was voted upon, which one, and they chose, that was the majority. The, the calendar that sits before you was the majority of the people that voted for that calendar within the district. There were so many things that we considered, and this one voice is saying, oh, there's no, not a full week. We thought, how nice will it be for kids to transition back? They come back for two, then they come back for four, then they're back for a full week. So part of it was the idea that it would help everyone in that transition for everyone from the summer to coming to school. So I, and I hear the other side of that, but I think when we were thinking about that, it was, it felt good for kids, you know, give them a chance to get their feet on them a bit. So there is that other side of looking at it in that realm. Um, we also looked at how, you know, what we needed to do with those half-days, and what was disruptive to how we were currently doing them. And I had polled the administrative team to ask what day of the week, because as they were, as they are now, they're every day of the week, and there's no consistency in how those are delivered. And some days, the contract speaks that you get to, that you leave at a certain time. So if, if the half-day ended up on that particular day, then they would only be in professional development for a certain, less amount of time than they could be on another day. And so it was very difficult to plan. And so we voted on a day, and that day was honored through the calendar as well. Parent conference evening was something that we're looking at as, as well, so that, so the half-day begins, and then teachers are there through that whole day and into the evening, so that they can have parent-teacher conferences in a way that's, I think, will be better for everyone. There'll be more time to schedule. People that can come in the afternoon will come in the afternoon, et cetera. So there were a lot of things that we thought about in the development of how the calendar would work, and it was all done prior to any snow. Just so that you're aware, it was not done because of snow at all. It was done because we thought that, and also, Labor Day starts September 8th. I think it's the date next year. Or it's late, 7th, it's late. And that was another concern, because if we started after that point, then we're really into June. So I think there were a number of things that we discussed and talked about, and I just want to let you know that many, many of those ideas were considered as we went ahead. And there were three different proposals. So it wasn't just the one, just so that you know.
Was there a close runner-up?
No. I wish I could actually, you know, and I took majority. So I thought that was important, that, that we honor their voice in the calendar.
All right. Uh, I actually saw Jeff, yeah, first. No, go ahead, Mr. Swett.
Thank you. I'm sitting here thinking about, in this particular case, all of the things being equal, which perhaps they're not, that the greatest good for the greatest number is probably the legitimate way. There's always going to be a minority view, but the greatest good for the greatest number is a reasonable way to make this decision. But then the question is, greatest good for the greatest number of what? And it seems to me fundamentally that, that our customers, if you will, are parents. They're not children, because they're presumably not wise enough to know what's best for them. And although we should honor, as you say, the viewpoint of our staff, ultimately, we are here on behalf of parents. And so if you were a parent, how would you, would you still say that this was the right schedule?
I am a parent, and I would say yes. It is the right schedule.
I, I didn't mean-
I would appreciate that.
If you were a parent in Wareham is what I meant.
Well, I would appreciate, as a parent, the opportunity to transition my child back to school in this way. That's how I am, I looked at it, as what a great way to come back to school. You're not, it's not overwhelming, it's, you know-
I understand. Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Lazarus?
I'll yield to my colleague.
Mrs. Vugan?
I seriously, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate the time and energy and the work and the negotiation and everything that went into this calendar. I can't even imagine the amount of work that it has to go into scheduling, and then once it's set, all the planning that goes in after you think it's close to being a done deal. So I just want to say that I appreciate all the work that went into it. I have to disagree when it comes to just one piece of the transition. You're a parent. So as a working parent, yes, it would be great if I could also take off those three days beforehand, but many parents can't take off before then. And so when you transition from a summertime camp kind of experience, or whatever care that your child is in- or whatever care that your child is in over the summertime, to boom, one day you're in camp or a friend's house or something like that, and boom, you're going right into school. To me, that's a harder transition than preparing throughout the weekend as family time, getting ready, all excited, and then we start on Monday. To me, when I think about the transition, that works a lot easier for me than one day going camp and then right into school. The second thing is I do feel like we're still transitioning kids in in the beginning of the year, because we still have a half-day, and we still have Labor Day. So even though it's that first week, that next week, they have a Monday off, so they get four days off, and then the week after that, they have a, a half-day right in the middle of the week. Just looking at the current schedule that's there right now. The idea of, we've always done the Friday before Labor Day because of the traffic. There are many parents that live in this area, I used to be one of them, before I, I started my commute now the other way. I used to go to Hyannis, and now I go to New Bedford. That, that day is, I mean, I had to take a vacation day, but I did that same commute. So it was just, it was opposite, but I can understand that there's traffic, but anytime during the summertime, you know, there, so I, I understand that argument, but just because we've always had that Friday be, off beforehand, things have to change, especially when the whole entire calendar changes in a way that we're starting before Labor Day. The, um, the last thing in, in just that, I, I had a concern is that we're starting school after a whole entire summer break, and boom, then we just get a day off. You know, it's, it's, let's, let's get them involved a little bit before just one day off. So those were just the points that I wanted to make, like, I understand, but I have to agree with my colleague when it comes to, I understand that the decisions that were made based on the negotiations that went on for the, what here in our school, but when we think about the community at large and the parents, there are different perspectives, and for me, the transition mid-week or, you know, and other parents could feel the exact same way, is more difficult when you're going from a summertime feeling in your head to boom, you're starting school. I just wanted to say those pieces. So again, starting on Monday would be best.
Right. And, um, I, I don't know how to put this, I kinda winced when you said that, like, that you, you only really got the, the feedback from one stakeholder group, it seems. And it's a shame, as, as Mrs. Clement said, that, that this didn't go through the superintendent's advisory panel, where there would be, be parents involved. So I don't know if this needs to be voted on today, but if it doesn't, I think we should really table it and get some parent involvement, even if that's just Rhonda and I as parents of the school committee, or a bigger group to, to, 'cause I, I don't think I can support it. I, there's a lot about it I like, and there's only little about it I don't like, but the little, but, but the little bit about it I don't like, I don't like a lot. So I, I think you need, parents need to be heard. Oh, does this, does this need to be voted today?
No.
Then if it's all right with the committee, we'll table it till the next meeting?
That's your call.
Um, I'll, I'll table it till the next meeting. And hopefully, we, hopefully we can get some-
If I may, I have one other comment-
Yeah, sure.
On this.
Sure.
In terms of the high school with which I am intimate, this calendar makes the transition for high school students very easy. And the reason is that the way the high school schedule is set up, teachers see students every other day. So they would see a group Day A on the first day of school. It gives that teacher a chance for classroom introductions, hand out the books, give them the syllabus, and then they won't see that student again until Monday. The students will come in on the second day, are the other group of students. They'll do the same thing. Classroom introductions, these are my rules, here are the books, here's the syllabus, and then the following week, they're ready to go. Whether, whether school starts on Thursday, Friday, or it starts Monday, Tuesday, your first two days are basically not terribly involved in education as much as it is in bookkeeping. And having the two days before really puts you in a nice position that following Monday, because then you're ready to jump into your course without having to worry, without taking that day for classroom introductions and the books and all the rest of the hoo-ha. So, once again, I'm in favor of the schedule. I certainly would encourage parents to send their students to school, and I certainly sympathize with parents who have made vacation plans. If a student misses a couple of days, it isn't gonna kill them. We've all done it as parents at some time or another. We've adjusted our schedule to them, and they've adjusted their schedule to ours. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, if there's nothing else, we'll, we'll move on then. To the next, uh, next agenda item is school calendars, but it's this year's school calendar. Uh, possible adjustments to school calendar two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen.
Yes. What I would like to inform the committee, um, on March ninth, it has been scheduled as an early release day, and after consulting with administrators, we, and the union, we are proposing to move, revert this back to a full school day. The reason why we've missed so many days of school prior to MCAS, and actually just instruction time, so we would like to, uh, take this as an early re-lease day and move it back.
Do you need a vote on that or no?
No.
Okay. Thank goodness.
I know, that's what I was thinking, I have to tell you.
Thank you for informing us.
Yes.
Why don't we need a vote?
I don't know.
Because it's a full day.
It's a full day.
It's a full day.
A half-day counts as a full day.
We're just rearranging some of the time.
Can you explain? I didn't get that at all.
Oh.
And I'm terrified, so.
I'm not-
Is March ninth a full day or?
March ninth originally is an early re-lease day. And what we're going to do is make it a full day and keep the kids all day instead of releasing them half-day.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not for a moment suggesting I want to vote on this, but if it's, if it's changing the calendar, if we had to approve it to start with, if this is a change, I'm not sure I understand the logic of why it doesn't, doesn't require a vote.
You certainly could vote on it. That would be fine.
Yeah, I mean, it, it wouldn't, wouldn't hurt.
I make a motion to approve moving March nine, or April ninth to, sorry? March ninth to a full school day.
Sharkin. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, next item on the agenda, acceptance of gifts.
Okay. I would like to recommend and ask for a motion to approve a gift of seventy-six dollars donated by families at the band Chorus Concert in support of the music program at Minnetonka Forest Schools.
Uh, excuse me. Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Are we tabling the school calendar?
Yes, till the next meeting.
Do we need a vote for that?
No.
Okay.
Want me to read this again?
Uh, yeah, please.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. "I recommend the acceptance of seventy-six dollars donated by families at the band Chorus Concert in support of the music program at Minnetonka Forest."
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Please, uh, any abstentions? Passes four zero zero.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, "We are requesting that the school committee accept a monetary gift from Target in the amount of two hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. This money is going to the middle school, and it will be added to the school Student Activities Fund to support clubs and after-school programs."
So moved.
Is there a second?
Sharkin.
Um, discussion, Mr. Swett.
Just curious, how is this money generated?
A gift from Target, I believe that it's like the red card or something like that, where when people go pay for things, they get to don't, they get to-
Thank you.
Okay, um. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero. That's all the gifts?
That is.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, financial reports, Mr. McMillan.
You gonna go for January first?
Yep.
Thanks.
No, just the, good evening, school committee. So I've circulated for this meeting two financial reports, January and February. I mean, I can just give you the, sort of where we're up to now. We are still quite close to level pegging with this, where we were at the same point last year in terms of the percentage left. The, uh, the issues which were important last time we presented are still, eh, remain important. That's particularly our out-of-district costs, which we expect to go over our budget. Um, although we continue to watch it closely. Also, obviously, with all the, the recent, the weather, with, he's spent much more than we had expected for snow removal, snow cleaning, snow plowing. At last count, that was upwards of thirty thousand dollars, so in terms of overtime and contractors to help with this, to help with the snow removal, so that's putting pressure on our budget. And it means really, you know, we have a very tight spending freeze, pardon the pun, in, in place with our, eh, with our budget, so principles are, eh, very restricted in what they're able to spend, what ones they have left on to help us cover those additional costs. So do we have any specific questions?
Does anyone have any questions on the financial reports? Mr. Swett?
You're, you're still concerned about the, um, out-of-district, even though on paper, it looks like it's in good shape?
Yeah, yeah, so you know, the-
That always, that always concerns me, because it means I can't take any comfort looking at the numbers.
Yeah. So, you know, just, it just unfortunately depends a lot on timing of invoices and bills we receive, so sometimes companies, eh, places are a bit slower, especially if a kid's come into, if a, sorry, students come into their placement later in the year, then sometimes it takes a while for us to get the initial invoice. So-
So, bottom line is, despite what it shows, you're not comfortable.
Exactly.
That's unfortunate. Um, pupil transportation.
Yes.
Um, that actually looks reasonably good, I mean, pretty much on plan.
Yes.
Is that something I should take comfort from?
Fuel prices is something you can take comfort from, so, eh, both, I mean, partly, I mean, the, the biggest thing, that's what, eh, Mr. Chisholm tells me, is we should be grateful for the low fuel prices. In addition, we've, knock on wood, we've not had any big, eh, mechanical issues with the buses so far this year, so that's helping to keep our costs down.
You just have to find some wood. I mean, knocking on that table is-
Yeah, I know. I think I've got a pencil. One more second. Got a pencil.
Thank you.
So, eh, and, um, keeping our, helping to keep our costs down. And adding the new buses, I think, has helped, 'cause obviously that's just overall, we've got rid of, or, sorry, our, our, uh, more expensive buses, so that's-
Do those, do those used buses come with warranties? Limited, I'm sure, but-
Yeah, they come with the inspections already done, that sort of thing, and a limited warranty. I'll double-check, but I believe, I'm trying to remember the-
So we know for certain they're not Lemons?
Yeah, exactly, so they have to have passed inspection and so on before we take them.
And fi, and finally, substitutes.
Yep.
We're about thirty thousand less available than we'd had last year, even though we budgeted only seven thousand less. Bottom line is we're spending more this year with fewer teachers, um, than we did last year. Is there, I know that's probably not your area of expertise, but, um, is there any particular thing happening there that it was causing us to be overspending?
Off the top of my head, I know we've had a couple of, eh, well, we've had a few long-term absences, and so we've had to bring in long-term substitutes. So these staff are, you know, they're here almost the entire year, but they still go on a substitutes bill, because that's the, that's where they should be.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
Yeah, so that's, that is putting inflated, well, is pushing up that number.
Okay, thank you. But, it, I'm sorry, one more quick question?
Yeah.
I know that we don't have the revolvers in front of us.
Yes.
Would you happen to know how the transportation revolver is doing?
The transportation revolver is is fine, I mean, it's, you know, we have, we don't have much come, going out of the transportation revolver, except when we're providing services to the schools. We used it to purchase those buses. So it's, I mean, it's not, I'm not worried about it.
Not worried about it?
No.
It's building normally?
Yes.
Thank you.
But not, it's not, I mean, you know, we have some money coming in, but mostly, you know, the money comes in and goes out as we provide, you know, pay the payroll for the people who provided the services.
Okay.
We have, you know, we've not had McKinney-Bento or anything like that this year.
The McKinney-Bento money is in there, it hasn't been taken back, correct?
It has not, partly 'cause we've spent some of it buying the buses.
That's good.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
With, I should say, full approval of the-
I understand, I understand. Thank you, Mr. J.
Sure. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. McMillan regarding the budget?
I do have. I do have a couple of transfers that we'd record, oh, sorry, did you have?
Yeah.
I apologize.
It's okay. Heating. If you look at that on page ten, uh, we budgeted less and we're, and we're still ahead, it, it seems, so that, we're in really good shape there.
Yep, so we have slightly fewer buildings, which helps.
Yes.
You know, from last year. We have, we got a much better contract than we'd had last year as well. Eh, that's really, you know, it's those two things combining to help.
But now-
The start of the year was actually not as cold.
But, but now under the utility item, what's that, electricity and?
Yep.
Just electricity or?
Electricity, water.
Water? And, um, wha, wha, why don't we see such savings there? I mean, we're doing really-
Same, same thing, so much better contract.
Much better contract on the water?
Yep, uh, on heat, on electricity.
Electricity, yeah.
And that's the biggest part of it, yeah.
That's interesting, 'cause I think the, for the, for people, it went up big time.
Yeah, so we locked in, yeah, we were, we locked in a contract last year for a year and a half, and we got a good deal on it.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Swett asked about, my, I had the same question about substitutes. This, this, uh, page eight. Textbooks and related software media materials. We've, I, I just, I guess I'm curious what the difference is between that line item and the one in just instructional materials, equipment, and technology. There's a, there's a separate line item.
Yeah.
And it was budgeted zero dollars, like, like, why?
So, in two thousand, well, you saw the, when the town voted the warrant to buy books, to buy textbooks a while back, part of the, other, the flip side of that was they zeroed out all the textbook account lines.
Yeah.
And we haven't built them back up again.
And, and that's, and that's what I thought, but the, but then under the, under the whole, that's like subcategory, but under, under the whole category, there's three hundred and twenty-four thousand bucks. So instructional materials, was that not books?
So it includes, I mean, it includes like paper and pencils and
Yeah.
soft, instructional, eh, software and all sorts of things. So if you go back a page, so on page seven, it gives you the rest of the okay, the rest of the, the items which can add up to that total. So the s, so the state gives, so these definitions come from the state, and they separate textbooks as a specific ish item.
Okay. All right, just curious.
Yeah.
All right, so if there's no more questions on the budget, if you wanna go into the transfers.
Yeah, so two transfers requested this time. The first is to take a six thousand dollars from the school committee contracted services account and transfer that to le, legal services for school committee, specifically the school committee other expenditure.
Is there a motion on that? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Sharkin.
Uh, any, any further discussion? Uh, just, just a, a comment, as I made before, just, just- Um, I just, just a, a comment as I made before, just, just in, in the future, whenever you're doing transfers, if we just have the exact account number with it, it just makes it so much easier to track back and, and, you know, if you have to, if you have to look at it again, if the public ever wants to look at it again.
Of course.
You know, um, but I'm, I'm okay with it otherwise. Um, no, no discussion on that? So, um, are those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero.
And the second part is to move sixteen thousand dollars from testing and assessment, which is the testing and assessment salary line, to teacher specialists, which is the ELE teacher salary line. So the budget we had, we have a, the budget we had provided for the ELE teacher is, we had hoped to offset it with more grants. Unfortunately, we've not been able to do that, so we'd like to move the money over from the testing and assessment sign, whereas opposition would not field.
Okay, um, do we have a motion? No, I need a motion for this one.
No, so moved.
Second.
Are those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are those opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero. Um, actually, I recall I had a question about curriculum on the, um, o- o- on the, the financial report, but I forget what page that is. You know which page that is? Which section?
Do you know which part curriculum?
Here we go. Um, I, I just, I just found it was curious that we, last year we budgeted eighty-three thousand dollars and this year we budgeted two ninety-three and, um...
Sorry, which page are you on the?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's page five. And we have much less left this year.
So that's, comes back to that whole eh, issue where we moved the assistant superintendent budget line.
That's what that is?
Yeah, to the curriculum, so we had.
Still, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Takes a long time to wash out.
Alright, that, that explains it. Thank you. Alright, um, so anything else under, um, financial reports?
That's me. Nope, that's me. Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, and we, and I know Mr. Swett had asked about the revolvers.
Yes.
Um, would, would we get?
So we just, yeah, so I...
Would we get the grant report too at that time?
Yes, I was planning to do, you know, to do a quarterly report, so the end of this quarter, do a report with all those.
Okay.
So that'd be, so that'd probably be our next meeting, I think.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes.
Question just regarding the, uh, next year's budget. Are we planning to have another vote on the school committee? Agenda? Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna need one.
No, I know, I just didn't know if, um, if it was planned in the next, um, couple meetings.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Um, okay, so now moving on to the next agenda item, MSBA application, uh, Minnet renovation vote.
Good evening, John.
Good evening.
Good evening, School Committee. So we have, so Joan and I have been work- sorry, Miss Siemens and I have been working on the second MSBA application for the year. So we've already come before you to apply for the accelerated repair program under the MSBA for grant for D C S roof and boiler. And this is an application to the MSBA core program for a more extensive repairs and renovation of the Minnet Elementary School. So again, it's the same, it's the same process as before, so this is just, we're just applying to be invited into the program. If that was, if we were to be successful, then we, the first step would be a feasibility study. And, or even before that, we need to work out where we're going to get the money for, from a feasibility, for a feasibility study. And then after that, it would, so some, then only once the feasibility study was done, and we'd worked out where the funding might come for the whole project, then we'd be able to move forward. So it's a, it's just a very first step in this, a long path to doing the repairs at Minnet. Eh, so what we have, so there's a number of different headings under which you can apply for a, to become part of this program with the MSBA. And the two that we are applying for, for Minnet are replacement renovation or modernization of school facility systems. And in particular, we are looking at windows, boilers, heating and ventilation, and electrical system, and the school safety system, that's entryways and, eh, announcements. We're also applying under replacement or addition of obsolete buildings, in particular the, the portable, the portable classrooms that are attached to Minnet. So under those two headings, I, I mean, our feeling was those are the ones that apply most appropriately to Minnet. The other ones don't apply so much. You know, things like, we're not, there, there isn't at the moment overcrowding at Minnet since we made those changes. The building is not, while the building needs repair, it's not structurally unsound, it is a safe building at the moment, so eh, we feel that just those two items are the necessary ones.
Yeah, I had the same. I mean, we had to change our parent pickup at the end of the day this past week because of all the snow and the snowbanks, and it was very difficult. When you only have one entrance coming in and out of Minnet, and then you have cars and buses trying to use the same lanes, it was difficult. So I had to move our special need vans to park out front at the end of the day. And that freed up some parking in the back so that parents could park and get out without too much anxiety. So it, it's, that's difficult to do there. I'd like to have a separate parent drop-off than where the buses come. Uh, we definitely need additional parking, redesigning the front entrance. I know, um, that was spoken about earlier. So when a family comes and they may be in a wheelchair, they have to call the school, and then we go open the back door and they can get in through the ramp that way. So redesigning that is one of the things that would be on our list to do. Uh, replacing the portables, these things are very old, so I'd like to be able to tear those down and then add on some, some additional classrooms. We talked about the electrical, with all the technology that we have going on, we have maybe one or two outlets in the classroom, because these buildings were built before technology, and there's not enough there. Uh, windows definitely need to be replaced, they're single pane. I have plastic over my windows right now because of the cold, um, also in the nurse's office, just trying to make the heating more efficient. And because we do run summer programs now in our school, there isn't any air conditioning, so hopefully with the renovation, we could add air conditioning to the school and replacing the classroom floors. So a lot of this will be taken care of through the renovation, instead of draining our maintenance budgets trying to get these projects done.
Okay. Um, does anyone have any questions?
Can you remind us again where we, where the state stands now with the percentage of reimbursement?
So for the high school roof, it's sixty-eight percent.
Sixty-eight.
So, which is the top end. I've, I don't, I don't think I've ever s- I've seen any other school project get that percentage, I think, or get as hi- get higher than that. So I think that is the, you know, but it's a sign, obviously a significant amount of money.
Okay.
And really makes it possible.
But is it a roll of the dice? You just don't, you don't know what the n- that number's gonna be?
Eh, the...
I think they have a formula, and it, once everything is factored in, they do the feasibility study, then they come up with the percentage.
So, so because we got sixty-eight percent for the roof, does that mean we were in like really tough shape?
Yeah, well, I mean, it means that they look at a number of things, I think, including eh, school, the district's finances, low income ratios, things like that.
Yeah, we're in tough shape.
You know, so then themselves, they usually have a range of what it's going to be, and that it just, depending on what kind of money that they have.
Exactly, exactly.
So there's several factors. I mean, last time we went through this, we didn't know, but...
Yeah.
Right. And Mr. Swett?
I was just gonna say, I th- I think it's a reasonable guideline, but it's always subject to appropriation, is it not?
Yes, yeah.
Meaning, they have to get, have a certain amount of money appropriated for the overall MSBA program.
That's correct.
Yeah, so...
They won't approve you if they don't have the money.
Right. Well, could they approve you for, say, thirty-eight percent instead of sixty-eight percent, because that's all the money they've got and they've adjusted the formula accordingly? I mean, if I, if I was in town meeting and I was going to have an initial spending, because there's always an initial spending required in order to get this money.
Yeah.
And I had doubts as to whether it was going to be sixty-eight or thirty-eight, that would cause me to pause as to whether I wanted to even spend the initial money. So do, can we tell from the appropriation process whether it's likely to be sixty-eight again?
I think that by the time, I think we'll have more, better idea by the time it comes to the town, if we, if it goes to town meeting, and we have, we had, because by the time we went to town meeting with the high school roof, we knew what the percentage would be, so...
Right, so I would encourage us to see if we can get that kind of information so that we can make the taxpayers a- aware of it if we can.
And I mean, I think, I, I think we all know that, you know, we, we are not beholden to this, so if it came to, and it was only thirty-five percent reimbursement, then, you know, we don't have to go through with it at that point.
True, but if we'd already spent a chunk of money in the...
But you, actually, bef- the feasibility study is reimbursed as well, so at the same pers- at the same rate.
Yeah, exactly, so thirty-eight percent.
Yeah, exactly. So, but you would know that before you spend any money, you would know what your reimbursement rate's gonna be.
Fine, okay.
Any further discussion? Um, do we have a rough idea on what this would cost, you know, without any reimbursement?
I don't, I don't. Especially, I mean...
That's what the feasibility study is for.
Yeah, exactly, because we would need to be in discussion with MSBA to find out exactly what we could cover and what, you know, the extent of the repairs that we wish to do, you know, whether it be, includes replacement of the portables or not, those sorts of things.
Alright, now, I know they're pretty picky on how the motion reads, so how, how do you want to do this?
I think the last time we just...
Just you need to sew.
Gave it to Michelle and to...
Well, you need to read it.
I think Jeff's read it last time.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And then we'll give it to you and you can copy it.
So, so, yes, I need a mo- I need a, need a motion to, um, approve. And I think if Mr. Swett is the maker of the motion, it would be appropriate for him to read.
Okay, is this, is this the Minnet draft or the MSBA statement?
Mr. Chairman.
Is the one that says resolved?
Yes.
Okay. I move...
Hold on.
Hold on, hold on.
Why don't you just take your motion from, uh, move, uh, move to submit the two thousand and fifteen statement of interest for repayments at Minnet?
Because as I recall, last time we did this, they needed it read into the record.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, as, as painful as that is.
As you wish, sir.
Alright, um, so where were, where were we?
I was about to read it unless my esteemed colleague would like to read it.
Not in the waste.
Yeah, alright, um, go ahead, Mr. Swett.
I move that having convened in an open meeting on Wednesday, March fourth, two thousand and fifteen, prior to the closing date, the school committee of Wareham, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April seventh, two thousand and fifteen, for the Minnet Forest Elementary School located at sixty-three Minnet Avenue, Wareham, Massachusetts, O two five seven one, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement, renovation or modernization of the school facility system such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs to a school facility. The statement of interest will address renovation of the Minnet Forest Elementary School building, including replacement of windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems, and upgrading the electrical system and the school's safety system. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for, for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, the statement of interest will seek to replace the current modular classrooms at Minnet Forest Elementary. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance of the approval or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Wareham Public Schools to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Are those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are those opposed? Abstentions? Uh, passes four zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. Um, the State Senate will host a variety of events throughout the state known as Commonwealth Conversations. The next one will be on March eleventh, and I'm trying to s- it'll be at Bristol Community College from four to four forty-five. And if anybody would like to attend, here's the information. Unfortunately, I have to share with you that the boys' basketball team went down in defeat by sixty-one to fifty-eight. They had a great season and very sad way to end.
Congratulations to the team though for an amazing season this year.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Is that it?
That's it.
I think they lost three games by a total of about ten points.
Uh, does anyone else have anything, uh, for the superintendent's report? Um, I, I, I think I do. I, I, I just was going through my packet, I was going through the personnel list, and I just, I noticed this position of P B I S advisor at D C S Elementary School. Is, is that stipend? What is?
It is.
It is? Is that new?
No.
Oh, I just never heard of that, okay.
No.
Um, okay. Uh, so I guess moving on. I have to find my agenda again. Um, school committee reports. Mr. Swett?
Uh, just, just to tell the committee that the, um, policy review committee, um, thanks to the hard work of, uh, Michelle, um, has completed its, um, process for this fiscal year, and will have a, a final report, I guess probably at the next meeting. And that reminds me, Michelle, I owe you the, uh, the results of that meeting. Um, and we did take up Mr. Lazarus's, uh, request regarding background checks, and, um, it was received favorably.
Great, anything else? Okay, moving on. Um, any other business?
Just have one thing.
Mrs. Fugan?
So as a school committee member, we receive a magazine in the mail from N S B A, National School Board Administrators. Um, they have a, uh, initiative that they're promoting that I just want to put out there, which it's Stand Up For Public Schools. Uh, the website address is, uh, W W W dot stand up for public schools dot org, and six simple steps, and, um, it talks about however we, that, they believe that providing quality public education to every child is an essential priority in our nation. The six steps below can help you focus on engagement efforts and make them as meaningful as possible. Um, who should stand up for public education, motivate people from all walks of life, who sh- who should support public education, whether you are a parent, a political leader, leader, a small business owner, um, state decision maker, a member of your community, who believes in the American dream when you take a stand for America's public schools. So I wanted to put it out there that I'm encouraging folks to go to stand up for public schools dot org, and something as easy as just contributing and sharing stories about how the Wareham Public Schools are doing an amazing job educating our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
No, executive session.
Well, well, read, I was gonna say, but somehow we have to word, word that properly that we're gonna be leaving here, going into executive session.
Right, you need a motion to go into executive session.
Okay.
Whether you're gonna come out to vote or not, or if you're just gonna come out to adjourn.
So, so the motion, uh, can I have a motion to that effect?
So move.
Second.
The mo- what, what is the motion?
To go into executive session.
But are you coming out to vote or coming to out to adjourn, that's what you need to say?
We're coming out to adjourn. I need a motion to enter exec- into executive session for the purpose of contr- contract negotiation slash collective bargaining. Uh, we will not be coming out to vote and only to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are those, are those in favor?
Yes.
We need an individual.
We do, yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
I'm gonna go by name, so Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Mrs. Fugan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazarus? Myself, yes. We're in, we're...
In executive session.
We're in executive session.
Right.
We gonna stay here?
No.
No, because Bruce has work to do. Can you believe we lost by three points again?